Calling our city commission previewing to order at eight oh one A M. Happy Friday to everyone. Good to see you this morning. Alright, so we have our standard items one through seven. Eight through ten is our consent agenda. Anything we would like to pull off of that for further discussion? Negative. Alright, let's move to our new business. Agenda item number eleven regarding discussion of possible approval for the millage rate. Any questions on that? Alright, number twelve, a discussion of possible approval of city employee health benefits package annual renewal with interest.
Has the price gone up?
Yeah.
There is an increase of five point six. Of course, Owen will be here on Tuesday as he always does and gives you a breakdown of everything and why. But I will tell you originally, the Blues wanted to go up by fifteen percent and they negotiated and talked them down. So it's a very slight increase.
So the only question I had when you read the overview, it says annually, the total increase of the city is estimated at one point seven five eight million.
I think that's.
Yeah, but then you look at the fiscal impact and it says ninety three thousand nine hundred forty one dollars annually, so.
Yeah, I mean, we need to correct that right there. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that worried me.
Yes, sir. Thank you for catching that.
Alright, any additional questions regarding city employee health benefits?
Good morning.
Sorry, y'all.
No problem. We didn't have any discussion on the village rate. Did you have any questions about that?
No, I did not.
Okay, and now we're on number twelve with the employee health benefits. Any questions about that? Number thirteen, discussion of possible approval to award a development order for Jake's landing. Any questions regarding that?
Yeah, I got quite a few on this. Amanda here?
Yes.
So. If I understand this right, the comprehensive plan basically has the exception to this if they can't meet the, what do they call it? Access management standards. Is that something that's in the comprehensive plan because of required by state or is that something we did at the city?
Um, I would think Kevin might be able to help me here because it's been in there ever since I've been here. So I wasn't there when they put it in, but I would think that if it's F D O T access, we do refer to in our code. And I think elsewhere in comp plan that we follow like F D O T roadway guidelines, Bobby might be able to help that. So I think we have to.
So we have to abide that by per the state?
Yes, yes.
So, so the reason we have to allow him to develop over fifty units from one access point is not because of the city comprehensive plan, but because the state has dictated.
It's in our comp plan and the state dictates we have that in our, yeah. I think it's a safety thing.
Well, well, and I think it's more of, it's a sort of a fairness thing too, because the, it's not the city saying you can't or can't do it. It's D O T said. D O T saying, look, you can't have that second. I know the city requires that second entrance, but D O T is saying you can't have it.
And that's over us.
Yeah.
But, but, but the D O T is saying you have to allow them to only have one access point over fifty, is what you're telling me?
And I'm not sure if there's a statute out there that says that, but certainly our comp plan says that, which is our.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Like Amanda, I mean, I don't know if that comp plan's been there for so long.
Yeah, but we have to meet F D O T standards and so we have to meet their access standards and requirements. And so I, I'm assuming that's why in our comp plan, it says we want this, but if they can't meet the F D O T kind of safety access standards, then we can't require them to have it.
So what I would like to find out for Tuesday is, is it the city, is it tying our hands because of the city or the state? That's what I need to know.
Bobby?
Oh, in regards to.
I'm following the F D O T access.
The county is the one permitting that access.
I get that. No, I'm talking about, because according to our comprehensive plan, you have to have two access points if you're building over fifty lots.
Unless you meet that D O T requirement.
Right, and what I'm trying to figure out is, is that requirement in our comprehensive plan, something that we wrote in? And we're, we tied our own hands as a city, or did the state tie our hands where we have to allow them to?
Ultimately, it's the city's comprehensive plan. So I mean, you can always say, look, the, I guess if we, if we didn't put it in that comp plan. So really the question is, when we were creating that comp plan, and that all gets approved by the state, by the way, back, you know, so. If that was some sort of a required element, I don't know if I answered that off the top of my head.
Commissioner, you're, you're asking for us maybe to do some research with F D O T to see if this is something that we have.
Was that a required element of our comp plan to have an exception?
But I think, at least on this, when we discussed it last, our comp plan didn't specifically say you have to have two entrances, which was the debate. Because it just said over fifty.
Well, that's our L D R.
Yeah, the U L D C says for multi-family. It's not the single family, it's just for multi-family.
Right.
Um, that's the U L D C, and so we would not have allowed them to have the two, but the comp plan, which overrides the U L D C, which is state controlled, says that they, if they cannot meet the F D O T access management requirements, then they can just have the one, which I don't think we would have put in there if we didn't have to.
Right.
I think we have to go by what F D, it's like signage on the roadway.
Yeah, we have got the D O T standards.
Yeah, we have to, we have to go with that standard.
I'll reach out to Ray Ubank at D E O. He's going to approve all these comp plan changes and see if he knows, because it's been in there for so long.
Yeah.
I'll try to find out, but.
I mean, if, if it's the case that the state is dictating that to us, it's just another thing that ties our hands in municipality where we can't control something.
There's lots of that.
And, yeah, I know, and, and that's why I've been trying to get ahold of Jay Trump. I still can't have a sit down with him. And I know, I know in the last campaign, I don't know about you or Perno, but I remember one of the things that came up was about overdevelopment. And then to me, when we originally talked about this, I was like, this is great. We have something in the comprehensive plan to help protect us from overdevelopment. And, and now if this is dictated by the state, it's another thing that we can't control because they're, they're dictating what we can do or can't do.
Let me, let me, just to kind of clarify, over the years, so we had much more stringent growth management laws until probably about twelve years ago, where they were really trying to, when we had the Department of Community Affairs, they were very strict and F D O T were very strict and it was hard to develop. That's when we had proportionate fair share and all of that. Because the people that were in the, the political, the, the government wanted to be careful about growth and control growth and make sure that the roads could accommodate all the growth. It was very strict, but then we got different state representatives in who had different agendas and were pro-development. And so they stripped all that stuff out. And so now it's basically the developer kind of rules in a way.
And it's a balance. I mean, they probably jerked the wheel too far to the right. I mean, they probably need to jerk it to the right a little bit because development is important. It does bring in quite a bit of revenue to municipalities and counties and that, but it's just gone too far.
And that's, that's the background there. I just wanted you to know that that's, it has changed a lot. The pendulum has swung totally the other way now.
You couldn't convince them?
You might.
I can't even have a sit down with a representative. I don't know, I like to convince them.
And I'll see if I can find out if those required element, I mean, it doesn't change the fact that the comp plan is what it is when they made that application. So we've got to live by it.
So is there anything we're writing that we have from F D O T that doesn't, that doesn't meet their standards?
That it, that it wouldn't?
That doesn't, because they came out and did an assessment, right?
They, yeah, they have, because they have to go through the county and they went to F D O T and we did get something, I don't know if it's in your packets or not, saying that they, they cannot meet the, the requirements.
Can we add that to the package, please? And then what's the Bay County permit thing? Can you educate me on that?
It's their road connection. That's a county road.
Right.
And it looks like they're going to make them install a turn lane southbound, but we haven't seen it yet. So they gotta do some improvements on three.
Okay.
So we just don't know what they are.
So it's just what do they have to do in the front, in the access point area?
To connect to the county road.
Right.
Yes, so with this, with this agenda item, we are asking that you recommend contingent upon us getting the permit from Bay County, the access permit from Bay County, and there's also some other plans for off-site improvement. So if you, if you approve the development order contingent upon those things, they will not get their development order. You've approved it contingent upon that, but we're not going to issue them a development order until we have those and have seen those. They won't be able to have the development order. They won't be able to pull any permits, other than land clearing permits, until we are satisfied with those things.
Can we, can we, I was, I don't know if there's a question for you is, can we hold off on a vote until we get those things? Is that legal?
Um, that's up to you.
Part of the concern was the developer was, he wants to feel comfortable, he'll get a development order before he does the off-site stuff. So that's basically what this is doing. He's like.
Yeah, he's not going to do it before he has a development order.
He wants to feel comfortable. He's not going to invest a lot of money.
Those offsite improvements are more than, are more than what he needs. So it's going to benefit the rest of the city.
It'll be an upgrade and we'll end up working out an agreement for reimbursement back to him for the additional capacity. Like we did Mill Bayou and Arena Bay. So they're going to oversize it.
Yeah, he might, he might only use twenty five percent of it upgrade and the rest is going to go to others.
So, so if we end up voting on it, we, we could vote on it where.
Still has, still has its contingencies on the offsite improvements and the county permit.
And then he'll be comfortable investing the money into doing all the offsites.
Alright, okay, thank you.
And then we could hold the plat back until those offsite improvements are done.
Yeah, well, the final plat is, he can't sell anything.
Exactly.
It's that, and that's done.
At the end, and so you can make sure those are all been done before you get the final.
I don't know, I, this is the way I feel about it, and I know there's nothing I can do about it, which makes me angry is, you know, as a developer, you go and you do all your research to make sure it's all set up. Everything that you need to, to do with that plot and what you plan on doing, you do research beforehand before you buy it. And it's just another thing the state, if, if it is a state that's dictating that, that they're tying our hands and it's like, why am I here? That's the way I feel about it. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but that's how I feel about it.
Same way about the federal government.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel a way about all government.
Yeah.
Just leave me alone.
Yeah.
Commissioner, can I just point out that on there, because there's the application for development order in your packet?
Yeah.
And then there's also the application for a development exception from subdivision.
And I read the notes on the bottom.
And it, and, and that is the, the requirement, the F D O T requirement is four hundred and forty-five linear feet between driveway connections on that segment three eighty-nine, but the property only has three hundred and thirty linear feet. So that is why they can't meet the access standards.
Right, and I, yep, I understand that, but again, they knew that before they even bought the plat, you know what I mean?
Well, they did try to come out of the city and you all voted against it.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then in the comp plan, it, you know, it does say what it says at the moment. I mean, when we do the, if it is something that isn't required, but I, it's elsewhere in the comp plan, it says we have to follow F D O T standards. So I'm assuming all counties and counties have to follow F D O T standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I know, I, I'm not trying to take it out on you. I hope it doesn't feel that way. It's, it's just, it's just aggravating.
Did we ever get the language? I don't think we did. The language between the U L D C and the comp plan matched up together? Because remember it was a little bit different when we were dealing with Finch's issue over there by train? Do we ever get that?
I don't think we did. You didn't direct me to do that, but that's something that I can do. I can make a change to the U L D C so that it says the same as the comp plan.
Yeah, so you can reference.
I don't blame you. I blame the lawyer. It's more his.
No, I, I can do that one then.
But the U L D C does refer to the comprehensive plan, right? So it's.
It does refer to it with the language.
But yeah, you're right.
The U L D C implements the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, right, because that's the part we ran into. It was elusive as to, it wasn't direct as to what you do, but it's more than so many units.
Which gave the developer leverage to, to get his way, so to speak.
Ask me to do that, I'm, I'll be happy.
Yes, please.
Alright.
It's a small fix, but can help the confusion.
I think too, we are going to be meeting with someone who is also an expert, because Amanda knows about it. She's already sent him our comp plan.
Comp plan, the capital improvement schedule and told him how to access the U L D C.
Dr. Chapin from F S U, I think preliminary commissioner work and they are going to be meeting. And then we'd like for him to do a workshop on our comp plan and, and things we can do to improve it. And I think just having that, you know, that expert to work with us and ask those questions is going to be very, very beneficial to the city.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, and can I, can I remind you as well, before you even go into that, that we have a requirement, the state requires that we update our comprehensive plan every seven years. Two thousand and twenty-four February, I think it is, two thousand and twenty-four is when we've got to send our updates to our comp plan. So we need to, one of the things I'm going to be asking for is money in the budget for this coming fiscal year to hire a consultant, because that's a massive task, because they have to look at all the statutes to make sure that everything that we have in there is up to date with changes in the law. Look at, have meetings with you guys, look at whether there are things in there that need to come out, what you want for the future. And they know what kind of boundaries there are, as you would, like what kind of things you can change and what kind of things you can't change. That's going to be a massive undertaking that's going to take months and is going to need a consultant to help you with, and that is coming up next year. So I just want you to be aware that there may be things you're not happy with now, but you're having an opportunity to totally revamp the comp plan next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
You know.
What, what she just said brought me back to this. A number eleven, where we're talking about the, you know, budget hearing dates and all of that.
Yes.
You see what I'm talking about? Is there any way that we can do or plan on or schedule or whatever to workshops in August for the budget? So that the, we can have workshops and people can get involved in all that kind of thing, instead of what happened this year. We ended up having a workshop after it was voted on.
No, no, we're actually going to have those in Sep- September. Remember, you usually have about a two-hour workshop before you even vote on it. Yeah, so you have those before and, okay. Yes, I'm, I'm just saying that we can have two instead of that one two-hour thing.
What we had, right, was the mid-year budget review, and we just had. The actual mid-year budget review, yeah.
So you'll have two, as we previously have, you'll have one.
Because I think if you do it in August, it'd be too early.
We won't even be completely finished. I just feel, I just feel like when it comes down to that budget, we're, we're meeting on the day before it has to be turned in at five o'clock, you know what I'm saying? So I don't think there's any room to.
Yeah, and, and one of the things we will do again this year, and I thought it was pretty helpful for everyone, is that you met individually with Kiki and I. We went over the budget line by line as we will do with the residents as well, and then we'll go back and have that first workshop. Where we'll go over it line by line. That's on the fourteenth. Remember, we can't have it before the county or the school board have their, their public hearing, so it'll be on the fourteenth, which is a Wednesday. And then, and it has to be at five oh one. So usually we'll have a workshop around three o'clock to go through all of those things. And then we'll come back. That's just proposed. And then with those, if there are changes, you know, we'll make those changes. Then we'll come back to our final hearing. We'll have a, a workshop before that and then it'll be adopted.
So what, we can't have our, before the school board?
Yeah, same day.
Can't have them same day.
The same day, I got it, okay.
Yeah. So, so yes, you will have those, those opportunities, several.
Agenda item number fourteen, regarding the discussion of possible approval of the, for Jake's landing. Any questions regarding that as it relates to agenda number thirteen? Number fifteen, city attorney.
Okay, yeah, this was just some clarifying language. You'll see bold and underline, just to clarify that when you're making your charges per meter, it's actually for each meter. So if somebody has a property and they put three meters on there or something, we don't want to just be paying one charge, so. It just clarified, I guess there was some confusion that must have come up in the last couple of months that they wanted to clarify.
But no, no prices.
No price increases.
Language thing?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on that? Number sixteen, city attorney.
Alright, yeah, this is, so remember we did four cleaning liens, basically four demos that we used our nuisance abatement process for. Three were paid for out of C R A and one was out of city funds. So all four of those properties came down last budget year. We put liens on the properties. None of the liens have been paid. And so we have this tool available is to put those lien amounts on the tax bill as a special assessment. And so this would be step one in that process, which is this initial assessment role. We've already told the property praiser about it. And so this just basically authorizes, you know, those amounts, we'll send, we'll publish it in the paper with those four properties and send letters to those four property owners, and then we'll come back September fourteenth and adopt it. You know, unless they're paid before then, we'll adopt it as a final assessment and it'll, it'll go on their November one tax bill for those four property owners.
That property on Kentucky that you guys went down there, it was cleaned up, all cleared and everything? It's right back to what it, the way it was, right back, even worse now, with that property on the corner of Kentucky.
So if the current owner don't pay the lien, whoever buys the property has to pay the lien, right?
Yes, but I mean, this, this is just going to go on their tax bill, so if they don't pay, you know, don't pay their taxes, then you have that whole, somebody can buy the tax certificate. And so the city will get paid and then they've just got to get caught up in their taxes and, you know, they'll have, you know, three years to do it, basically.
Or house or whatever.
Right. Yeah, so eventually.
But it, it takes the, sort of the collection out of, you know, right now we have a lien sitting out there.
Right.
That, you know, they're not going to pay until they sell or refinance, but if you put it on the.
So eventually we're going to get it. Might take a while.
Yeah, so if, if they pay their taxes or their, their bank pays for taxes for them, or if some investor comes in there and buys a tax certificate, we'll get paid right away.
Right. But it could be three, four years.
It could be. If they don't pay taxes for the next three years, then, you know, we're not going to see, unless somebody buys a certificate, which a lot of people do. You know, there's investors out there that buy those tax certificates every year.
I know people make pretty good living doing that, actually.
Yeah, because, and even if somebody redeems it, you get interest.
Yeah.
So.
Number seventeen, task order for the proposed construction engineering inspection services for rails and trails. With Duberry Engineers. Any questions on that?
Just excited. We're getting started on it finally. It's been years getting to this point, years.
I, I do have a question for Economic Development Director. And my question is really just regarding explaining what this engineering is, because I know previously we discussed the engineering that was paid previously. So just, just sort of explain what's the difference between what we're doing here versus what was paid, what was paid previously?
So, construction engineering inspection services is one component of the overall construction process. We started with hiring Panhandle Engineering a few years ago to prepare the engineering plans. And they did this, they completed all of this. Now, in the next few weeks, we're getting ready to hire a contractor to actually put the trail, to build the trail. As part of this construction process, we need to have a registered engineer to oversee, to make sure that the contractor is actually building the trail according to the construction plans. This is a D O T requirements, and obviously the engineering firm that will do the inspection cannot be the same engineering firm that, that the construction science in the beginning. And that's the reason why you're seeing Duberry Engineers here, because Panhandle Engineering did the original plans.
It's kind of like when you have a new development, you have the developer and then you have another person for the tech review.
That's exactly right.
Yes. So they, they will be on a regular basis. They will be out there making sure that the contractor is actually putting four inches of asphalt down according to the plans or so much lime rock. Whatever the construction.
Is our trail still running? Pat might remember this, because they were talking about it at the T P O, about they moved the trail from the rail line to the power, F P L power easement. Does that affect any of our area or is that when it goes over into Panama City?
That's when.
It's after Panama City, that's north.
Okay, I was making sure that I still knew where ours was going.
Yeah, ours isn't affected, but the, it's the, it's connecting, it's how it all connects that I'm concerned about as far as, you know, people have to come back down south into Panama City to go up into the, to go back north into the, if, if they want to truly ride all the way up to Marigolds, you know?
Yep.
But if you're long, you're long bikers, you want to do that, so.
And me and you is going to do it, aren't we?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it off for a little bit myself.
I got you.
That's completely different projects. It has nothing to do with ours.
Alright.
I do, I do want to ask a question now. We, we, you know, the, the engineering firm that's with the construction is Panhandle. The, the engineering firm that's going to keep the construction in check is going to be the Duberry Company. But Panhandle still keeps the, the construction company in check too as they're building, is that right?
Yes.
Don't they?
Yes.
Okay. So there's basically two, two, two engineering firms working in unison to, to keep the contractor in check.
That is correct.
Didn't we just vote on that a couple of meetings ago?
We did.
And how much did we get Panhandle then?
Well, we voted, Panhandle's going to be, Panhandle was always the engineer record on this, I think.
Right.
Yes, so a few commission meetings ago, we, we approved a, a task order for Panhandle Engineering to update the existing construction plans because the scope of work changed recently. If you recall, the construction plans were done some three years ago and they required some updating of the quantities for the, for the construction process. And that's the reason why we had to go back to Panhandle Engineering, who did the original plans, to update this information so that we can actually advertise this project and solicit some bids for the construction.
Okay, I, I mean, we're well over two hundred thousand on the engineering part so far, right? With what we paid Panhandle on that last meeting and then this hundred and sixty-three.
Thousand dollars, I think it was.
So the original cost for the, or the cost for the initial construction plans, the whole set was some two hundred sixty-eight thousand, if I'm not mistaken. And that was paid three years ago. The update of the plans was thirty-three and some change. Yes.
Okay, just that's it?
Did grant money cover any of that initial?
Yes, the two hundred sixty-eight, that was phase one of the rails and trails. All of that was covered by the D E O chief.
So, thank you. So it's not coming out of our coffer?
No, but it's coming out of taxpayers' money, for sure.
Out of the state, yeah.
Oh, the state, yeah, there you go, state.
Didn't get us, okay.
Any additional questions for Ms. Gainer? Thank you. Just a reminder, when we have our city commission meetings, just remember if we're, you know, wanting our city employees to come up and make some type of comments or answer questions, just to direct, you know, city manager to ask them to come up. That way they can, you know, so follow the chain of command there during that time. So let's just try to keep that in mind. Any other thing, anything else before we?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. So I know I brought this up before. You alright?
I'm okay.
And.
She closed the iPad, man, she thought we were gone.
And minutes ago, we got all the numbers.
I know I brought this up before and I've been in contact with Ms. Gainer and Kiki on this about the financial review committee. And I, we looked at it and I think we got it narrowed down to four different areas that we want to, or I would like to have on the financial review committee. And I'm wondering what I, what's my next step to put it on the agenda if we want to discuss it now?
To create a new committee, we just do a resolution.
Okay.
My thought, and I don't know if this is, well, I mean, it's all open here. My thought is that we would expand the debt review committee into a financial review committee. And I have talked with Frank Hall about that, and so he was on board with that. However, wanted to, still wanted it to sort of be a thirty thousand foot view versus getting into the weeds of what the financial review committee would do. And I have talked with some other citizens about it, because I've been talking with Ms. Gainer about how to, how to redevelop that debt review committee into a debt review budget or a financial review committee. And so when we use the term review, then, as I've talked with some citizens, for them, the interpretation of review is actually looking to the past. So it would almost be more like an audit committee to an extent, citizen audit committee, not that we'll use that term. You know, almost like a citizen audit committee where they're looking.
Some cities do, actually, a common audit committee.
Yeah, well, you have to have one, but. Yeah, well, you have to have one, but we, we've appointed ourselves as the audit committee. That's, that's statute.
That's why I mean the ones that said.
And you can, you can take, you know, say you had an audit committee, it's, it's required by statute and it was different people. You can always expand their duties as well, so I mean, basically what we've done is. You guys are the audit committee for the statutory purposes for picking out your auditor every three years. But this debt review committee, you can just, we can grab that resolution and add three or four bullet points to it and, and add to the scope.
So that's been my thought has been to just expand that debt review committee, implement some of the other things we would like for them to do.
But, and I understand your, your thirty thousand view, I would say, you know. If there is something that, you know, they see that doesn't look right or something, and if they wanna look more in detail into it, I wanna be able to give them the authority to do that.
That's what they did when we had the debt review committee, is if they saw something that, hey, give us a little more detail on this. Then that's when Jay Moody would come in, um, John would drive in and try to provide more details on the bonds or. You know, why do we finance something, so I think it's really, if they were alerted to a red flag or what they thought would be a red flag. Then they do have the option to dig deeper into it.
Right.
Um, but it's not them starting at that level, you know, and then working their way back.
Wouldn't it be also, I mean, we, we hired a company to go through everything, to check on our debt, to see whether we were healthy or not. That's really a debt review committee that we paid for.
Yeah, but I don't think they look at to see if, cuz I know one of the things they discussed was. Um, is it worth refinancing? I don't think they look at that, do they?
But we have.
Our debt review committee does, but I don't think our audit committee does, looks at that, do they?
No, they don't, but we do have someone, a consultant.
Your, your financial advisor, basically.
Yeah, he comes in and he'll.
He's always looking at that.
He's always looking at, John, I think Mezeki actually came in and spoke with you all and, um. This blonde guy came in and, and talked to you all from the debt review committee. And just said we were, we were, we're headed in the right direction and right now, just the way the interest rates were, we're just gonna. Um, continue to go there until we could see some, some different changes and maybe go there.
Yeah, they're always gonna be looking at ways to refinance that debt because they get fees off of that. So if there's, if there's a savings to the city, you better believe we're gonna hear, hey, you guys could save forty thousand dollars.
I get a check.
I'll get forty.
That's part of his job.
But, you know, I mean. And not only that, once the, the Financial Review Committee gets going, they, they might look at that and be like, you know what? Maybe we need to modify it a certain way cuz this is gonna be new to us and I'm sure it's gonna be a learning curve for all of us. And, and, and this might modify into something that I never thought would modify too. So, essentially they'll become, I don't wanna say subject matter experts, but people have expertise in, in doing this with the city. And they might have suggestions on modifying it or maybe doing away with something that they're currently doing or something like that.
Cause I think another issue with having the committees, too many committees, I guess, is you have about ten people in the whole city that's probably interested in. Budget or debt review, you know, as a whole, and so after about a year or two. You're gonna be struggling to find people that wants to take their time to go through that stuff, you know, it's just gonna kinda fall apart under its own weight, so to speak. So I think if we can keep, broaden the scope, like you said, of the committee that's already existing.
Yeah.
Just seems to work better.
Yeah, and I guess the question we have to ask is what is that committee going to do? Um, in lieu of what we're supposed to be doing in regards to our obligations, so I'm not.
Right.
Against the committee, but also asking what are they doing as it relates to what are we supposed to be doing? Um, because we're seeing, we're seeing this, um, in real time throughout the entire year.
Right.
So if we're not catching it, if we're not staying up to date on it, I mean, we see the warrants list every, you know, every two weeks. Um, we're, we're approving all of the, all of the money that's being spent, you know, within the budget, so. I guess we have to also be mindful that we just don't over, you know, just overwhelm our staff with. Just extra stuff to do, um, when we're actually working with the budget, you know, the entire year.
Well, a couple of things I'll say about that is, one, I, I actually had quite a long list of what I wanted them to do originally. And that's when I sat down with the city manager and Kiki and I got it trying to dwindle down to. What I thought would be a fair and reasonable thing, so it doesn't overwhelm the city. Um, the second part is, um, you know, I, I keep, I know I've talked about this many times before, but. I look back at what position the city got put in from what happened in the past. And I keep thinking, you know, is there something we could have put in place that could have helped prevent that? And, um, you know, um, and we did have.
I don't think so.
I disagree, I'll tell you why.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we did have some residents, I think you and Ms. Walker were looking through some stuff and they did find some things that, that came to light. And, uh, and I'm not saying that they're gonna go in there and they're gonna go in there and find an, uh-huh, oh, look what you did. And I, I don't believe that that's gonna happen here, but in the future, if you ever had. Similar people in certain positions, it could happen again, you know, cuz we're not all gonna be on the commissioning out, you know, forever, obviously if the term limits. They approve, you know, and, and the city manager and the financial director, they're not gonna be in those positions forever. And so that's gonna be, uh, always changing, I'm just trying to create a culture so that in the future, it would, it will hopefully prevent that. For one, but two, if there was a, someone that came in that they wanted to hire, they'd be less apt to try to. Do the things that they, they did.
I understand that, um, but I also think that if we're just looking at things in black and white, which is what you're gonna be seeing, so if. If I'm understanding how things were called in the past based on. Hundreds of pages of documents that have been published about that.
Yeah.
Then it was really, uh, just finding discrepancies, so then if I'm able to align my. Invoices with my check statements and all of those things, then you're not gonna see anything that's happening, you know, so. So I just think, one, we just have to also make sure we're continuing to vet the individuals that we hire. And to make sure that they're trustworthy when we hire them, um, at the same time, so again, I'm not against the debt review, budget review committee. I think we just have to be mindful of, because the citizens that I've talked with about it, they wanna make sure that it doesn't become like a purchase approval committee.
No.
So. That's been some of the concern is that, is this gonna be a purchase approval committee where now there's another layer? That the city has to go through in order to get their purchases completed. Um, is it something that, you know, hey, we, you're, you're reaching this threshold and I got to come back to this committee to get an approval? Before you go back to the city to do certain things.
That's not my vision, my vision's kinda like afterwards for the most part, you know, looking at things, you know, that. Maybe we need to improve on or maybe got missed or in the future, if we ever did get. A rogue city council or city manager or financial director or whatever, it, it could get found sooner rather than later.
The things that, that Janet and I actually found were not things, um, like what you're talking about. They were things like, uh, people signing off on, on ridiculous charges that we knew instantly couldn't be true. People don't work thirteen hours a day without taking a break and, and yet we're paying ninety dollars an hour and a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour for those people. Those things jumped off the pages.
Double invoices too, wasn't there?
Double invoices, double, yes, it was ridiculous, so, I mean, those are the kind of things I think you're talking about. And I know I, everybody thinks I pick on Panhandle, I'm not picking on them when it comes to this, however. I had fifty invoices laid out on a table and Janet is a number guru and. When we actually tried to figure out what we were paying, what the city was paying for, it was like ten percent. Of task order eighty-five, ten percent of task order fourteen oh one, ten percent. And then, so you go back and pull those, see what we paid, it was unbelievable, unbelievable.
And I'll say this, is I, I'm sure back then, you know, the, the, the systems that we had in place, when I say systems, like computer systems. Is a lot different back then, now, I know you guys made a vast improvements in the munis system and all that and there was a lot of work put into that. So that, that's probably gonna help us a lot too, you know?
So many more checks and balances.
I, I know there is.
And, and, you know, we've worked hard to get to this point and Kiki can probably speak to a little bit of that as well.
Thank you. Yes, we have worked very hard to put in checks and balances, um, in accounting, we can call those internal controls. We have separate, separated duties, uh, where only certain people are allowed to do so much of the process. And then are double checked by other folks, we've made vast improvements in what you saw a few years ago. Now, I understand you're trying to. Prevent what's happened in the past, I support that one wholeheartedly. However, part of the problem with the city had, this is not a legal opinion, this is an accounting, uh, opinion. The folks that were involved in the problems were colluding, again, not a legal opinion in an accounting position. No matter what internal controls, I can put iron bars on everything in this city. If we have another collusion problem, it's not gonna catch it.
And that's all I'm saying is that there are enough people that are colluding together.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter who you have in place or what committees we have in place, you're just not gonna see it because individuals are gonna hide it. They're gonna hide it, I mean, especially if we're going, and if I'm colluding, then I'm gonna know what the process is. The reason it, it happened probably before because there were really no processes and checks and balances in place like we have now.
And the people who were making the decisions together were making the decisions in their own best interest, not in the city's best interest.
And, and, and that could change, that could change in the future when you change the people in certain positions.
Yeah.
That's, that's why, again, I wanna create that culture.
Cuz we voted on a lot of measures right after a lot of those arrests were made, because we were, we had a black eye to the public. So we worked hard as a board, the previous board worked very hard to try to put some things in safeguards in place, like, like Kiki was talking about. Some of the things we've implemented, we have to have two different signatures on, you know, different things, so to try to save face to the public. And I'm not saying we've done everything there is to do, obviously, there, there can always be ways to tighten up, but I'm just saying, we have, we have been working on that.
I, I know and I, and I appreciate you guys doing all that stuff, I really, really do and it makes me. Feel more comfortable as far as what I'm doing when we make decisions, it is important, so I, I do appreciate you all doing that.
So you mentioned that, or you've talked about it too.
Um, well, I kinda.
Say what you're thinking.
So, I know you guys sent an email to me and there was a couple of things, I was like, I don't know if I totally agree with that and I wanted to sit down and talk with you guys, but anyways. This was my vision was, you know, they get certain reports and I don't know if we agreed to like, was it once every quarter, once every two months, something like that?
No.
Where they would, was it quarter that we agreed to?
Were we still talking about the?
The, the Financial Review Committee.
Okay.
I think we agreed of once a quarter, I can't remember. And, and so they could review the reports, you know, like the warrant list and, and things like that. And, and then maybe they can get them leading up to that quarterly meeting and, and have all their questions ready to go and that. And so, that was one thing, was the review of all those reports, look at any negative trends and provide any recommendations. The other thing is to review the, the rates and fees that we have, so like for instance, the stormwater assessment fee. That would have been, if, imagine if we already had the Financial Review Committee, they could look at the stormwater assessment fee and kinda, um. Review it and see if it makes sense, right? The debt, which I think we already talked about that. And the last thing I had was if we as the commission had like a special area that we wanted them to look at, you know? Can you guys, um, maybe we're getting ready to look at something or we wanna look at something in the future? Maybe we can rely on them to say, hey, um, can you look into this? I wish I had a good example and I used to have a good example and I can't think of it off the top of my head right now, but that was kinda the four things that I had in mind.
I think the commissioner always says to purview to instruct the committee to look at something if you feel like they need to look closer.
But, and, and I wanted to try to keep it as simple as possible and, and see how this evolves.
And probably instead of saying quarterly, I might would say, you know, annually and as needed throughout the year. Because getting them to commit to do that amount, that amount of work quarterly, as Commissioner already said, may not happen. Cuz we, when you consider the warrant list, I mean, we're looking at.
It can be a lot of stuff you look at annually.
Well, we even talk about quarterly, when I, when I look at a warrant list every two weeks, that's a lot of stuff for me to look at every two weeks. And then we're bringing all that information to them on a quarterly basis, I think that could be a lot for them to look at in that time period, and again, that's going back to doing. They're saying thirty thousand foot view versus a worm's eye view, so they're saying, well, at least Mr. Hall is saying that. He will let the committee, the debt review committee to evolve and commit to still keeping things at a bird's eye level versus a worm's eye level. And so now it's getting more into the weeds of the worm's eye level, which I think comes back to us as to what we're supposed to be doing. As the commissioners, that we get the warrant list on a regular basis, so we should be looking at it, um, on a regular basis to say. How are we spending, where are we trending, I think those are things that we can, you know, ask Kiki, um, as city manager. Wrap that process as well.
And, and I think we all got a different way of, we look at that warrant list and, and reports and that, but when you got like CPA and bankers and that. And if we can continue to have people like that on there, I think would help a lot because I think their expertise is better than mine, you know?
So, with them, with them reviewing the warrant list, the money's already been spent, so what are we asking them to do when they review the warrant list?
Look for any negative trends, maybe if they see something that just, uh, seems like a red flag to them, maybe they ask some questions on it and it might be just a simple answer, like, yep, got it.
But I'm not sure if you would get that from the warrant list though.
Well, I mean, I just use the warrant list example, they might, there might be a report kinda like where our mid-year budget review where it shows. This is what we projected and this is where we're at right now and there might be something, oh wow, this is way off, okay. And they may look at and be like, well, typically when we spend, we spend most of our money at the beginning of the years, at the end of the year because of these reasons, but, oh, okay, got it. You know, stuff like that.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions for Commissioner Ward?
So, I guess, I'd like to, I, I probably can't do it at this commission meeting, but like at the next commission meeting, see if we can put something together. On the agenda for that.
Yeah, if you wanna get him the debt review resolution. I would start there.
Okay.
And then if, take some of the stuff that you've written down. Just get it to Vicky and get it to me and we can.
You would just amend.
We would amend that existing resolution, but I think that'd be a plus for you to start, is look at that existing resolution, cuz obviously the debt review components already on there. You can see what we wanted to add to it and we can.
That was basically the, the first thing we approved when we became a commission is on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got, I've seen, yeah, I've read that.
Um, but yeah, I got one other thing whenever we're ready. So, um, I've been thinking about this for quite a while and it kinda. Didn't think about it for a while until the last commission meeting, I don't know, can we ask Chris Lightfoot a question? Have we, have we filled those four positions yet when you talked about the last meeting?
We have filled two of those, um, one of them is still, the other two we have, still an employee that's on workers comp plan, but we are. Trying to get all of our votes and then we have interviews set up for the other.
We're not totally filled yet.
We still have one opening.
We've filled two and we have one on workers comp, so there's only one open right now.
Okay. And that took how long to fill?
Probably ninety days, I guess, sixty to ninety days.
Um, so. So one of the things I wonder about, and I know it's very uncomfortable to talk about. Cuz it'll put the city employees on uneasy, so.
You and I can update.
I ain't seen that one before.
It'll make everybody uneasy.
I'm really uneasy now. Um, and, and I just, I just want everyone to keep in mind is this, if this ever came. Uh, to anything, it would be a while before it happened and I'm sure there'd be a process. But sometimes I wonder if some of the things we do in the city should be contracted out or privatized or outsourced or whatever you wanna say. And then there's other things that we, we, we contract out, should it be the city doing? You know, like for instance, I know we do all our engineering work with Panhandle Engineering, Doberry, what's the third one? I know the third, right, and, uh, should we have a city engineer?
I've looked at the, I've talked to other municipalities about the city engineer option, um. And part of it is, and I'm not saying I'm against a city engineer, part of it is that. Even those city engineers do have to go to the Panhandles, the Mont McDonald, the Doberys, to still get some of those things done. If that city engineer is limited in his expertise or her expertise as it relates to the project that's happening, then you still have to go out. And get those individuals to come in to do the assessment, so I'm not saying you're double paying, um, but you have this person on.
Right.
On staff, so that's, but again, I'm not against a city engineer.
I, I, I'm not either way, I just, I don't know.
But it would also, it's almost like with the city attorney, thing that we talked about, which has been, do we have a city attorney on staff? Or do we have a firm that gives us a representative from their law firm who then is able to go back and talk to, you know? Or do we have a firm that gives us a representative from their law firm, who then is able to go back and talk to, you know?
Yeah, like, like Bay County has two or three in-house attorneys, and they still have to hire law firms to do litigation and do this stuff.
Right, and I mean, that's another example where I uh, I personally would like to look at the option. To try, to have a study done, to see if there's any efficiencies in certain areas. Um, as far as that goes. And uh, and you know, there's a financial aspect, of course, but that doesn't always mean, cause it's cheaper, it's better. Um, can we still do it? If we could do it cheaper, could we still do it with the same quality as the city does it? And vice versa, you know, um.
What kinda study are you talking about, Jamie, cause it sounds like that would cost money.
It would, it would, um, basically a study to see, you know, if there's certain things that we contract out as a better. Is it, is it more financially better beneficial for the city to do it and still do the same quality of service and and vice versa?
And how do you do that, like an outside consultant or?
I have no idea.
I mean.
You know, I mean, does it, does the city have someone on staff who does studies?
No, no.
No.
No, and and I and I think the way we got to this is that. There's certain areas that the city can 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 tell you off the bat, okay, just like the ditch digging contract. We saw that in place, and not only were we doing it as the city employees. But we also had some contractors out there, so we could deploy them at any time, they were just not, you know, they were gonna not be there forever. And so if we had, we were behind on asphalt, right, if we were beha- behind on asphalt. We would do an RFP and then have those on um, call, you know, calls, so if we got behind. We could call those particular contractors to do, you know, ca- help us with asphalt or cement. Um, but they wouldn't work all the time, they would just, those RFPs would be out there so that we could utilize them.
Right.
But to have them where they're doing all of the work, all of the time, I I'm not sure that's, that's very um, productive on our side. I think that that's where you 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 look at things.
I think if if we, if we, let's say, go into that option, what happens now with the mercy of the contractors? And then if they collude, you know, then we're at their mercy as to what they're charging for those particular things, so then we. We could end up on the losing end of some of those, some of those deals because of that.
And, um, you're right, cause either way you look at it, there's pros and cons to it, and I and I've seen it on the, working on base as a contractor now. I've seen, I've seen it with them too, where there's certain positions they look at that were contracting position, that changed it to uh, civil service and vice versa. And um, but the ditch digging, that's a good example, I didn't think about is, cause we did some ditch digging.
We did it ourselves, and we told them the areas we wanted them to actually do, so. We didn't give them the entire plan of, you know, we want you to do everything, but they were just areas that we did ourselves, and then we we gave, gave them something. So I I think what it sounds like to me that you're thinking more of is doing RFQs or Ps. To have contractors in place, but utilizing them when necessary without, without, um.
No, that's not really what I'm looking at, I'm I'm actually looking at an actual study.
The whole feasibility of of whether we need outside contractors or or in-house.
Correct, correct.
I think some of it also is one of the pen and the scope of work that we're trying to do as well.
Yeah.
I mean, so there's.
I mean, there's some areas where you have people, that's all they do, and they might be able to do it with less overhead. And then there's other areas where it might be hard to find a contractor to do that work, because it's very, very specific, and it might be better to do in-house, you know?
You're looking citywide.
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Like take sanitation, that's a good one. Cities privatize that all the time.
Exactly.
You might save eight, nine hundred thousand dollars a year, but you're gonna get so many complaints and you're gonna lose all control.
Right, and and that, that's another, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying I think there's so many factors in it that. It's, I don't think any of us can make that final determination, I think if you did a study, and then we had discussions on that. But the sanitation's another good one, because like for instance, Panama City Beach, they got it all privatized out, you have to hire your own. Sanitation place to pick up your garbage, but the problem they're running into is. You've got like five or six different companies out there, and they go down, most people get picked up twice a week, so your secondary, your secondary road. Especially your secondary roads where they're not as strong, you might have every week twelve of those big trash, um. Vehicles running through there, and they they tear up the roads, they're they're very heavy and very tough on the on the on the streets. And so, even though it may seem that it would save you money, but in the ro- long run, you're gonna be paying more for roads, that's the type of stuff that I'm talking about. If we had a study done that they could look into all that.
In regards to a study, if we're talking about saving money, I think that's where a volunteer citizen committee could be developed on a temporary basis. If there's something we wanted to do, and they could come in and do the same analysis, if we have experts within our city that deal with contracting. I mean, that's something that that could happen, but I think it's more from a internal.
I see your nonverbals there, what do you got?
I I I I think that it's very, very important that you narrow down what you're looking for. I mean, you just can't do a study on the entire city, is there an area that, um, for instance, um, you know. Lawn maintenance or park uh, maintenance or asphalt or cement. I don't think it's going to apply to everyone citywide, there are just areas that we may want to look at. And see if 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 it's feasible, for instance, we did do a study on sanitation, and when we got that, the prices back. We were like, oh my god, the citizens could never afford this, and so, you know, that was just something we put all over to the side.
Cause that's something that seems like we do very, very well.
We do very well, and um, you know, any complaints, we can handle those complaints, we can give the good customer service. You can call me now and say, someone forgot this, and we go back out and get it, so I think it has to be narrowed down, what are those areas are you looking for?
Cause I, I'm thinking, and this is what I'm thinking as you, as you were speaking on it, I think that's what we've already done as a. As a city has looked at what's best for contracting, what's best for in-house, and then hire the rules employees that can do the work for the in-house. And then hire out the contractors that can do the contracting work, I think that's, I think that's sort of what is happening.
And and the other thing I I was thinking about, when you brought up the ditches, it's like, damn, we. We did that, I don't know if it was any cheaper doing it in contractors opposed to city and vice versa. But it seemed like those contractors, they they got them done pretty quick, I was surprised, I I didn't expect them to get done that quick.
Yeah, they did.
So kinda running into one of those, so we don't really want to to look at our um. Enterprise funds such as sanitation, water and sewer, that's where we really make our money and pay for that, but if we wanted to look at something. Which a lot of municipalities are doing, are concrete, which is more of a skill set that is harder, you know, for municipalities to kind of skill concrete people. Or asphalt, where we get behind on the asphalt work orders, or even the right-of-way mowing and the ditch digging. Those that we don't make any money on, that really cost us a lot of money, um, would be beneficial to look at having another contractor. Um, on 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 hand to do, you know, we, was it December, you all approved the contracts for the concrete guys. They're able to knock out a whole lot more than what we are in-house, faster, more efficient, and do a better job, but honestly.
Right.
And a lot, like the beach, they have a contract now for their asphalt work, but we don't wanna give up our sanitation, that would really help pay. For anything that we contract out, or our water and sewer, cause they're also good moneymakers, but our. Our big phone call items, sidewalks, asphalt, ditch digging, even mowing gets a, gets a little on hand during this time of the year. Those would be the things to look at, um, not, you know, I can't speak for parks, but I can't say. Can't see doing parks or sanitation or stuff like that, but the sidewalks, the concrete, the asphalt, where we really need. The the skill set and the and the help, that would be the way to look at it.
Because we wouldn't deploy a a person if we got a a contract for cement, and we just needed this little part, part here passed up. We, so, yeah, we send somebody.
One of the, one of the vendors we talked to about sidewalk repairs, they will only mobilize for a five thousand dollar BO. So they're not gonna come do a little section of, you know, five by ten sidewalk, they're gonna wait till the list builds up, same with the beach.
And then do a whole bunch of them.
Correct, same with the beach with their asphalt, they wait until they have the long list, they show up.
And that makes sense, but that's why I asked you earlier if you, to hire those positions, cause it took a while to hire those positions.
It takes a while, and with today's economy, it's hard to find the skilled concrete guys, you know, they're gonna go make twenty, twenty-five bucks an hour. For a concrete for a private company and work sixty, seventy hours a week, making the money.
Right.
We don't really have that option to allow them to work sixty, seventy hours a week, or pay them twenty to twenty-five bucks an hour for concrete guys.
Right.
Um, also, we don't purchase enough concrete to keep the the concrete plants, um. Happy, if if well, they, you know, we call to schedule concrete, they'll say we'll be there in three weeks, whereas. Somebody like breaking ground, do pours concrete every day, they can get concrete scheduled for tomorrow or Monday.
Right, that's exactly what I'm getting at.
Stuff like that, the concrete, the asphalt, you know, ditch digging like we already have.
That's the reason I said it has to be really specific.
You don't think anyone could do a study as a whole? I wouldn't think, uh.
I mean, that's part of what city manager does every day.
I know, I know.
You're always constantly looking at it.
Always, every day, we look at the budget, we look at all of those things of how we can save money, or where we can. Utilize contracts and and make sure that those folks are, um, you know, they have plenty of work. Um, and I think, and here's the other thing too.
And and before you say, I'm sorry, I don't mean to stop you, I don't want anybody thinking that, I don't think we have competent city employees or anything like, that's not why.
Please say that again, please.
No, it's not, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm always looking for areas if if there's any that we can improve on. And and I don't wanna make it sound like no, someone's not doing their job or anything like that, so sorry to mean.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm glad you said that, because, yes.
Everybody panics when you talk.
That's exactly.
I know, that's why.
Word outsourcing.
That's what, it's been bugging me, cause I've been really cautious on bringing this up, and it's, I mean, I.
But it does work.
Yeah.
I have to, I have to side with him on this, when I worked at Bay Medical, they out, they were losing so much money. In housekeeping, housekeeping of all things, they outsourced it to another company, that company. Paid the wages, paid the taxes, paid everything, they bought all the chemicals, and they had their own, their own set of rules. Um, and housekeeping kept right on, it actually improved, things became cleaner. And I know this sounds absolutely ridiculous, but it, this was one of the factors. The old housekeeping people would go in and clean a room, throw away dentures, we had to replace more dentures at, you know, thousand dollars a pop or whatever. Whatever they cost, because of that one habit, that one thing, and uh.
Give me fixtures?
Yeah, I mean, dentures, dentures, yeah, your mouth, you should take them out, set them down.
Has Bay Medical gone back to doing their hiring for in-house?
I've got nothing to do with them, yeah, they're owned by different people now and everything.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, you had something else you were gonna say.
Forgot. I just said outsourcing, the word scares everybody, and sometimes it, it helps, but those, none of the people there lost their job. That company hired the same people, you know, it just, and and it just saved the hospital money.
I I think you just continually have to do assessment of of the way the city runs and how the city is growing. Whether or not you will need additional outside help, or if it's more feasible, and we look at those things. Is it more feasible to hire an additional person or get outside he- help and contract it? And I think that's where you go, but I'm I'm just, I don't see in no way in the world you can do an entire assessment of the city. In terms of contracting, there had, there have to be certain areas that we identify.
Would Stan Tech be the type of company that would do something like that, or do you think it'd be a different type of company? I didn't know if there's any way we could reach out to a company and discuss it with them and see, they gave us some options, or do we have to put it out for RFQ or whatever?
Yeah, you're gonna have to do an RFQ.
It'd be some sort of like a systems engineering firm.
Yeah.
Look, I mean, anyways, uh, I I'll just leave you with this, um. A lot of the things that I read, and I know we would never be the same as these cities, so when you read these, don't think that that's my vision, but. Western Florida is one of the ones I read about, it's down right outside of Miami. Um, and uh, the, they've been a model for a couple other cities, one in, um, it's in Georgia, something Springs, Georgia. And then Centennial, Colorado, and uh, I would encourage you to read about those. Um, again, not saying I envision to be just like those, because every area is different, you know? Maybe they might have contractors out there, or plenty of contractors out there where they have those options, we may not, you know? Uh, depending on what you're talking about, but I just think it's worth, I I think it's worthwhile as something to to look at. And I don't know how much it would cost to do a study on that, and. Yeah. Anything else? No. Alright, thank you.